Seven o'clock, I'll call our meeting to order. Karen, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Here.
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Monson.
Here.
Councilmember Bystrom. Mayor May.
Here. All those that are able to please rise and join us from the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party's stand on a nation and under God indivisible with the retained justice for our own.
Council, before you have an agenda for this evening's meeting, I'll entertain a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, motion carries. It brings us to our open forum portion of this evening. Open forum is available at all meetings and is your time to provide your feedback to council on any items of your choosing. Yes, that you limit your comments to three minutes, and is there anybody signed up for open forum this evening?
There's none.
There is not, okay. Council, we have before you consent agenda items six A through six K. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
A motion to approve as stated A through K.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda approved. It brings us on to our regular agenda this evening. And our first item is a resolution accepting donation related to auto extraction equipment, and we actually have two resolutions this evening. I believe we also have a presentation. If we could perhaps, let's go through council resolutions for, let's do both council resolutions first, and then we'll do a presentation. Does that sound okay? So first item is for Resolution 722-1902, which is a donation of $6,990 from the Forest Lake Lions Club for auto extraction equipment.
Madam Mayor, make a motion that we accept Resolution 0722-19-02, the donation of $6,990 from the Forest Lake Lions Club for auto extrication equipment. Get it all yet?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, motion carries. And our next item is Resolution 722-1903, which is a donation of $2,000 to the Forest Lake Fire Department Relief Association, or from the Forest Lake Fire Department Relief Association for, also for auto extraction equipment.
I'd make a motion that we accept Resolution 07-22-19-03, the donation of $2,000 even from the Forest Lake Fire Department Relief Association for the auto extrication equipment.
I'll second.
With a motion and a second, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Chief Newman, I believe you're going to walk us through tonight's presentation, and it is actually, if I understand it, the Forest Lake Lions, the Forest Lake Legion Women's Auxiliary, and Legion Gambling that has provided the equipment. Turn it over to Chief Newman.
A few months back, the Forest Lake Lions approached the fire department and asked what priorities that we were looking for with the fire department, and after discussion of the list of items that are typically outside of our regular budget, we had talked about auto extrication equipment and with the manufacturing process with the new metals that are put into cars, that the extrication equipment that we have today, we have difficulties cutting through some types of metals like boron, titanium, chromoly. And so after that discussion, they asked if we would, if they could give us a donation to purchase those items. And so we had purchased a set of battery-powered auto extrication equipment, cutters, spreaders, and a ram. And between the four organizations that you had mentioned, we were able to purchase a new set, and they did arrive on Friday. So the Lions are here to hand us a check and take a picture with the auto extrication equipment.
Thank you, and invite members of the Lions to come up, and also members of council if you want to come down and join us. I assume there's somebody to take a photo with. All of us. Thank you so much. Okay, next item on our agenda is item 7C, which is Resolution 722-1904, for the address of 23964 Itasca Avenue North, a minor subdivision application. We have a full staff house today, I believe Donovan is walking us through this.
Yes, I'd like to present the minor subdivision application for 23964 Itasca Avenue. The applicants and owners are Tara and David Schultz of the current 20, approximately 20-acre parcel. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their last meeting and was a recommended approval for a final city council decision. Property is located basically on the northern border of the city, up here in this, get some video, please, on the, between Itasca Avenue and Inwood Avenue. And so what's, so it has access on both, to both frontages on both Itasca and Inwood. As a part of this application, we have a lotline adjustment with a neighboring parcel in order to allow there the minimum lot width on the Inwood Avenue side. So what's essentially what's happening is that with this lot number three in Sunfish Hills, there's about 11-foot by 420-foot segment that this lot's gaining. Meanwhile, the subject parcel is gaining 302 feet of public frontage on Inwood. So this allows for a lot to be split here into our approximately 10-acre and approximately 10.7-acre lots, which are conforming in this rural residential zoned district. And as a condition of approval, the city's requiring the drainage utility easement to match the other lots in Itasca acres, shown here. So in your packets, there is a drainage utility easement draft document. And there was some discussion at the Planning Commission level in order to ensure that this parcel wasn't somehow left bereft of, you know, being part of a large parcel. Plan Commission voted as one of their approval conditions that this land swap be prior to the actual lot split. So I've been working with Tara and David Schultz, the applicants, in order to prepare the deeds for that upon, if, you know, upon council review and approval of this resolution. So that would be, so that could, you know, would comply with the Planning Commission condition. And so the four conditions, let me get that to, the, so the, there are the five conditions for recommended, for recommended approval of this that relate to, the billing permit should be required for any improvements to the new parcel, that the new deed should be recorded for the neighboring parcel to confirm there's no decrease in size, decree a lot that's in further nonconformity. All concerns of the city engineer should be addressed prior to the issuance of a building permit, and the applicable parkland dedication fee shall be paid prior to approving deeds for recording. At this point, I'm happy to take any questions from council.
Questions from council.
Donovan, do we need, do you need two motions tonight, one for the drain easement and one for the resolution, or is one all encompassing?
I would believe one, just the resolution that the bridge had prepared, it is sufficient as far as adoption. Those, just because we had time to, and actually the applicant prepared that based on their timeline for, as part of the property closing, they prepared that. Usually that's a consent agenda item, so it's not as, as much importance as the actual minor subdivision.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
I, there was a public hearing as part of the Planning Commission, there was no comments made, is that correct?
Correct.
And this doesn't require a neighborhood meeting for this type of a project, correct?
Correct.
And everything is complying, I mean lotlines and sizes and all that, so I don't see where there should be a problem.
Okay. I will, unless there's further questions, I will entertain a motion for the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 07-22-19-04, approving a minor subdivision for David and Tara Schultz.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Good luck with your project. Next item, item 7D, Public Works New Employee Hires. Dave.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Gosh, this was probably the first meeting in January where I sought your guys' approval to recruit some of my employees. So we had a couple snags and some bumps in the road, but we finally got to the interview process, and we got two really good candidates, and both of them accepted positions. So I'm, I guess we're here tonight to seek approval to hire these two new members to the Public Works team. Happy to take any questions if you have any.
I have, so one question, these are both budgeted positions, correct? The recommended rate and the steps that they are coming in at, are those also in line with what was budgeted?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Any further questions of Dave? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the hiring of Matt Olson and Daniel Schreier to join the Public Works Department.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next up, item 7E, which is the Encore Apartments Whack and Core Fee Refund Request. Council, we have, you have a memo in your packet, Patrick, or who's actually walking us through this item? So Dave, are you walking us through this?
Yeah, I can walk you through it.
Kind of, I know we have the representative from Encore Apartments here also to present, maybe let's start with, start with you, lay out kind of items in the packet, and then we'll hear from the representative from Norhart.
Yep, good. Basically, in your memo, it kind of gives a step-through of kind of what happened last year is, as you remember, we kind of went through the discussion of increasing SAC whack and core charges for the city to help fund our infrastructure. It was approved, it basically doubled, all the fees doubled, and became effective January 1st, as the fee schedule became effective. A lot of this timeline is here, Mr. Payman put this together for me, he had a lot more of the communications, but kind of spelling out communications with the city, what they had with Encore Apartments, and kind of the way that stepped through. That's basically the roundabout way, and you know, Encore, representative's here tonight, you know, he's seeking a refund, which comes out to $201,600 extra from the difference between 2018 and, or 2018 and 2019.
Thank you. Before we hear from Mr. Kating, any questions of, questions of council of staff? Hearing none, are we, are we going to play part of the video?
It's teed up right now.
It's teed up. So why don't you come, why don't you come up? While Mr. Kating's joining us, I'll just say, this is a, so this is a video that Mr. Kating had forwarded on to me as part of his request that these fees be, that we, you know, give an exception to the fees. It was impactful, I appreciate you taking the time and doing a detailed explanation. You are seeing, council, we're at the nine-minute mark of a 17-minute video. Maybe you can spend a few minutes, we're not going to show this full 17-minute video tonight, although given tonight's pace of meeting, we would have time. Maybe, can you just kind of walk us through some of the fact pattern that you lined up, and then we'll maybe cut to the video as part of the timeline? So, welcome.
Yeah, well, thanks for having me. So the, really the fundamental issue is that, well, we understood the fees to be in what they were in 2018 is basically different than what ended up being charged to us. I don't know if we want to watch the video, if you want me to step through the timeline in person?
That's, the front half of the video talks about your organization.
Yeah.
You make a couple of points about how you have interacted with the city of Forest Lake in the past. I'll let you make those points, but I think those would be helpful data points for council to hear.
Yeah, so we're in Norhart, we build and manage apartments, but our passion is about creating a better way for people to live, and we do that in a number of different ways, including our smart technology, being some of the most advanced apartments in all of the Twin Cities. Also our communities, and there's some really neat pictures of people really bonding together in our community events. Even the way we get back to employees, for example LinkedIn contacted us about six months ago, and said that we were one of their top 11 influencers for supporting our employees. One of the, I hate to publicize this, but one of the things I mentioned in the video is we, one of our recent buildings, I stopped at a moment and took a look at a pothole in the asphalt, and we had gone and patched this in the street, and there was a number of potholes that we patched. And it's not, and I hadn't shared that with anyone until that video, but it's not about, it's not that we had to patch it, we didn't cause any of the damage, it's just part of what I believe is the right thing in being part of a city, right, is supporting us and the city members. And for this particular project, we didn't ask for any fee reductions or anything like that, we paid all of our fees in full. I know there's been a couple other projects that have received fee reductions, and I actually believe that we should be supporting the city and giving the fees that are due. I just think that we need to be upfront with what those fees are early in the process so that we're on the same page. Because as a developer, we have to make a decision about which cities and which locations we're going to build in, and if we're under the impression, working with the city, that it's going to be one price, and it comes back a different price, well, under that new price, we probably went to build here, so.
Maybe good opportunity to start the video at this point?
Sure.
To kind of walk through timeline?
Just one second here.
Video plus sound?
Kind of development process. So initially, we don't look at different cities, their fees, we look at different land, the cost, we look at the different rents in different areas, and start to try to narrow down what sites might be best for us to build in. So this is sort of the planning phase. And for us, in Encore Apartments, that happened in early 2018. We had conversations with city staff in a number of cities at that point. By July, we kind of narrowed it down, knowing that Forest Lake is where we wanted to be for this project. And so this is where we actually submitted our initial plans to the city of Forest Lake. And after submitting those plans, we have to go through a neighborhood meeting, we'll be meeting up with neighbors to get their input, then it goes through Planning Commission meeting, which happened in September, and then in October, this is when we finally received council approval. Now, let me pause there for a moment. One interesting thing about this design for any city is there's two stages. There's the preliminary approval stage where things are lower cost, this doesn't cost us as much to get through this kind of basic design work. We can have conversations with the city, see if this is fitting. After this stage is when it gets a lot more expensive for us, we go through hundreds of pages of plans to make this happen. So now we go to work to get all of the details done. Now, with this, it's kind of understood that at this stage, that on either side, there's isn't going to be any more major changes, and as long as we get through all the details and the paperwork, we'll be clear to move forward. Now, from the city's perspective, the city raised their city fees here in December 10. And then they made an announcement to developers on December 26 to say that these fees have been risen. And the deadline for submitting the paperwork to avoid the fees was December 31. So this is the first issue. Look how long this overall timeline is, and how short that window really is to make, make a change so that we avoid those fees. So first issue, this short timeline. The next issue, well, let me finish up this. So we ended up submitting our paperwork for a building permit in January, and then we ended up getting brain drowned and made. And this is actually when we discovered that the fees had been risen. And this brings me to my second issue. With a project this big and this long, and being one of the biggest projects in the city of Forest Lake, and in fact a fee of $200,000 here, this is something where somebody, anybody, should have given us a phone call to alert us about what was happening. We interact, the city and city council, city staff regularly throughout this process, at any point let us know that this is happening. Because despite being a short timeline, we could have still done something here to submit the paperwork to avoid the fees. So, no call. But fundamentally, the problem and the issue here is that we weren't given appropriate information so that we could respond to what was happening. Could probably pause it there. You know, there's an interesting question to be had.
It's a good summary of the timeline. Anything further you would like to add?
No, I'd like to hear council's opinion or thoughts.
Any questions of Mr. Kating from council?
I'd like to hear what staff has to say about it, so we know where we're with that.
Do you want to add?
Patrick or Donovan or somebody?
Well, I think the memo that we gave you discusses what happened. The gentleman says we didn't call, but the staff did email to developers, and particularly point out in the memo that Mr. Kating and Ms. Dickover, both from the firm, were given the memo that outlined the fees, and had time to at least apply for the fees. I think they probably at that time knew the total cost of the building and what that might be, and if Chad or Donovan or fire chief wants to say something regarding the process, I welcome to say that, but pretty much we outlined in the memo what happens here. As you recall, and as Dave mentioned earlier, the fees were increased based on a study that was done for us by our accounting firm, that indicated that we needed to raise those fees to support our infrastructure improvements in the water and sewer, that they were woefully inadequate, and that we were getting close to where those processes and infrastructures were going to fail us if we didn't start to raise some capital to do those improvements, and that's why we raised the fees the way we did. The fee study also showed that by doubling our fees, we still were not the highest in the area, we were still, I believe, in the mid to upper mid range of other municipalities that are charging these types of fees, so.
Other, any other questions?
Thank you, if you want to have a seat. Point of, I guess point of clarification to staff, this is the only project of this nature that was in pipeline, kind of caught, if you will, kind of between, kind of project and process, but not yet through full application, so this is truly a population of one, just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, it's my understanding there are no other projects that face this circumstance that were approved by the Planning Commission and city council for construction and got caught with a fee increase.
I guess, having been on council during, when the fees were increased, you know, we increased them knowing that we were facing a deficit in funding for, you know, future improvements that were needed in our, both water and sewer infrastructure. But that was intended to, in my, I can only speak for myself, it was intended to be a go-forward change in practice, not necessarily to penalize somebody for essentially a two-to-three week timing difference. And so I, I would support that we waive the fees in this instance, just given the amount of work, project work that had already been completed. And again, you know, a $200,000 impact is a pretty stiff penalty for what essentially is a two-week timing difference, and I just, I, you know, I believe in the fee structure going forward, and I think it's a good policy for the city overall. Articulation of that policy for this individual business is quite punitive, and had I been aware of this situation, I would like to think that I, you know, I would have, you know, said, you know, anybody that's currently in pipeline, you know, certainly is subject to the old fee structure, but I'm open to other, open to other comments.
Just to reiterate the position that we did give the notification in timely manner, and that wouldn't have been a very difficult thing to pay. If, if the council decides that they're going to waive this fee, I would strongly recommend that somewhere in your motion or whatever the case may be, that you state strongly that this is a one-time change, because what we don't want to do is set precedent that we'll have everybody come here and waiving fees. If you have the rationale that this should have been charged, the 2018 fees, that's fine, but I would really like to send a strong message that this is a one-off, that we're not going to do this as a routine basis.
I see that the staff recommendations are not to authorize a refund. I'm kind of mixed on this thing, I understand his position, certainly. The problem with the SAC and whack charges, and Mara and I were both on the council at the time, we were so woefully behind on getting maintenance done, it was a terrible thing that it should have been done six, eight, 10 years ago, and wasn't. So I can understand someone getting caught up in something like this, and I guess I would support some kind of a reduction in that fee, maybe some sort of a compromise, I'd just like to hear everybody, we heard Mara's opinion, I'd like to hear everybody else's on that. But I think maybe at least some sort of a compromise would be appropriate, too, so that's just my two cents.
I'm kind of with Sam on this one.
I'm kind of with Sam on this one. I'd be in for some kind of compromise, maybe split the difference. It is a one-off, got caught, but part of that's business. But on the other hand, a few days difference is, I think, kind of steep. So, I'm with Sam on some kind of compromise.
Councilmember Munson?
So, this is a tough one, because I completely understand where you're coming from, but also understand from a city staff perspective as well, in terms of, you know, they get the go-ahead to change things and things change. But yet, I sit up here and I think oftentimes when we change rates or things in the past, we've always said if there's something in the pipeline, maybe that wasn't done this time, I wasn't on the council then. I mean, I would be in favor of compromises. And I think Patrick's right that we, you know, if we do eliminate the fee, that we need to send a strong message that not everybody's going to come through the doors getting their fees waived. But this, the timing, I mean, and December 26th to January 1st, that's a really hard week to be focused, especially if you're on vacation, or, I don't know. This is a tough one.
Maybe what I would suggest is instead of us on council negotiating a compromise live here, why we could table, give instruction to staff to negotiate a compromise and to bring it back at our next meeting, if that is a willing, I see heads nodding. So, I will make a motion that we instruct staff to work with Mr. Kating on a compromise agreement. I would make a motion that we table this into our next city council meeting.
A second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and tabled. Thank you for being here. That ends the, our regular agenda items. We do have a discussion tonight with community input session summaries. Is this Patrick?
Yes, as you all know, that we had our two community input sessions for the strategic planning process the last two Wednesdays. They are now complete. We now face the next meeting on next Monday, the 29th, to go over those responses and try to wrap up the strategic planning process and put together some goals, objectives, and things like that. We have sent along to you the results of those sessions from not only the first session where the council and staff worked together, but the two community input sessions. And I must say, reviewing these notes from all the sessions, I don't see that they differ. I think the opinions are pretty close to everyone. I mean, not only does the staff and council have set opinions, but it seems like the two community sessions also came up with pretty close to the same of what we were talked about. So, that's a pretty interesting finding. What we don't have here yet is the online results. Those will close on Wednesday, so hopefully we'll have those by Monday. So, we're giving an opportunity for those who still want to participate in the process, a little more time to do that, and we'll have that process then hopefully wrapped up in those results. So, if you'd like to go through these, we can. If you have questions on them, we can. I just found it very interesting how close these all were.
I'd like to see it, it's kind of mashed together myself. The only comment I want to make is I popped in on the two community meetings, just long enough to say hello to a couple people without disrupting the meeting. And a couple of them are back there, and whoever was involved with that, thank you from the bottom of my heart, because this is such an important thing here, and we need that community input to make the right decisions. So, it was great, it was enough people that could make the right decisions and get this all worked together, so.
Yeah, and things we saw, I think, and the results here were infrastructure, downtown development. Those are the two things that stick out in my head immediately. So, communications, I think, might have been the third, one of the third ones. But like I said, they were all pretty close and all same-minded, so.
Councilmember Munson?
I was gonna say, it's very encouraging to know that we're all kind of heading in that same direction of forward. How was the attendance? I was not able to attend either of the Wednesdays. Was it pretty well?
Yeah, I think we had about 30 people in each session. So, I think for this type of exercise and this type of, during this time of season, I think that's actually a pretty good attendance. And I don't know, I don't remember what the online, I think the online was like 17, I think we had, maybe. So, well, I haven't checked recently what that is. But so, that's not too bad for this process and during this time of season, so.
I think that's good, especially Forest Lake is like their summer.
Very good. Any other items of discussion? Otherwise, this is all coming back for council next Monday, as we will wrap up our plan.
What time is that going to be?
It is.
I believe it's six, six or 6:30, I have to, six o'clock?
6:00 PM.
I was hoping it was 6:30, but that's okay.
Okay, moving on, we have another portion of the agenda. Anybody have anything else this evening? Think we can cover anything else in our staff and council updates? So, we'll move on to that. Back of the room, Chief Newman?
I have nothing unless you have some for me.
Anything for Chief Newman? Chief Peterson?
I don't have anything either.
Okay, very good. Very good. Donovan?
I don't have anything either.
Wow.
I'm gonna break this.
You're gonna break the trend.
I'm sorry, I have to. The school district held the first workforce summit this morning. Approximately 50 people attended the summit where they went through kind of workforce development. Business owners attended, and then they also gave a tour of the facility, so that was well-attended. It also was also videotaped, so you weren't able to attend. There will be a show on LEDV that'll actually run on the channels and be on the YouTube page as well. So, if you want to, to view kind of the presentation portion of it, that opportunity will be available. And then just wanted to give the council an update. The Humphrey Institute will be performing a market analysis of downtown, downtown Forest Lake, kind of looking at what are the needs from a retail and restaurant perspective. So, they're gonna look at what type of retail businesses will be a good fit for downtown, what's kind of locking down there, and then also on the restaurant side, too. They're gonna try to focus on those two areas. So, that study will be performed this fall. So, a nice kind of market plan for downtown is in the works at this point. That's what I have.
Questions for Dan? Sandy?
Just a reminder, budget season. We're gonna be working with the budget managers this week and developing these budgets and continuing on with that process, and hopefully get some communications to the council regarding some dates that we'll be discussing that with you as well.
Do you anticipate adding some council workshop sessions in August? Or are we working them into regular meetings?
I would, I would think we might have to either, probably not the regular meetings, but at least the workshop meeting, maybe, and possibly a second one. It should really, it just depends what it comes up, what the budget looks like at the time, how much we have to explain to you, so. We'll let you know as we get through it, through this week and see where it goes. Yes, I would like to talk a little bit about the recycling and refuse collection. As most of you know, or have heard through some of your constituents, the SRC has begun to collect their recycling bins during this week. This is the recycling week, so they're collecting the bins and taking them out. So, people are calling, wanting to know where their bins are and what's going to happen. And due to the condensed timeline that we've been forced into, we're working with Republic to rectify that as soon as possible. So, there may be a few days that the, your constituents will have to hold on to their recycling, put them in a box, put them in a bag. But it's anticipated that the cart delivery will begin the week of July 29th. So, we're right close there already. We expect the carts to be in town Friday and Saturday. They assemble them on-site here, and they will be delivering them all next week. In addition to the cart delivery, which will be a refuse cart and a recycling cart, both 95 gallons, which later on we will be offering exchange. But right now, we're just, they're going to give everybody the same size can. In addition to that, we've left some information out on the table here for anybody who's left in the audience that wants to look at that, that kind of outlines what we're going to do. In addition, Republic is going to take out a newspaper ad in the Forest Lake Times for the next two weeks explaining what the process is, when the delivery's going to happen, and so forth. They're also going to mail to all the residents a letter telling the residents the process, giving them their new pickup dates, if there is one. There will be some change in some pickup dates based on rebalancing of those dates. And discussions with them, the former vendor had an unbalanced schedule where they were picking up, you know, 1,000 this day and 500 another day, while they're trying to balance all that out for the five days. So, there will be some changes on that. And they will also include information regarding the recycling and what week you're going to be picked up there. And also, we'll give information regarding the yard waste and how you subscribe to that. So, we've been taking many calls. If there are calls, please have your constituents call us. We have updated the website to include most of this information as much as possible. So, there's information on the website. We've sent things, or will send things out on Facebook. So, we've done as best as we can today to hopefully inform the public. Again, it's a very tight time schedule we've been forced into, and I think we're doing pretty well to turn this around in a matter of two to three weeks. So, if you have questions, please let me know.
When did you say, Patrick, that folks will get something in the mail next week? And that will have their pickup date on it?
Yes, yes.
I just got a couple of questions about that.
The mailers being, was, or has been printed today.
Okay.
So, whatever the mail process takes, they're sending it first class, not bulk mail, so that everybody gets it. So, with that, they anticipate to be conservative next week, but it may get here Friday, Saturday, Monday, Tuesday somewhere. So, I wouldn't be surprised to see them a little earlier than next week. But if we don't get, you know, if you don't see them by Tuesday, then we'll make a call. But we think they should be in early Monday or Tuesday of next week at the latest.
Awesome, thank you.
And just to be clear, SRC pickup for recycling and garbage is as scheduled, though, until?
August 3rd is the contract.
August 3rd is the last day.
Date, which is Saturday. So, they are required to pick up both recycling and garbage. Unfortunately, the recycling, they're starting to pick up now, the cans. I'm sure they will pick up their garbage carts the final week of garbage. But by then, we should have the new carts in place. And so, there'll be a short delay on those who want to recycle, like, and they can bag it or put it in a box, so just wait for us, wait for Republic to get those issued.
And I think there's a, one of the questions I've received is around, especially some with small households, aren't interested in the full 95-yard cart. Those are being distributed initially because of the tight timeline, and then there will be an option to swap out to a smaller size once everything's distributed and we're back to ordinary course of business.
Yeah, due to the lack of information, who has small, medium, or large carts? We've talked to Republic, they felt it best to give everybody a 95-gallon cart for both recycling and waste. Let it all settle in, and then they will have a way to swap those out. We probably will store them on-site here and as they go along. It may not be the first week or two, but after we get in, they will have the ability to contact Republic and swap those for a smaller cart, if that's what their desire.
Also, that sheet, that information sheet does have a Forest Lake-specific contact, both the email line as well as phone number for specific follow-up items as well, so.
And I believe those are both active, I think, I'm not sure. But I believe they're both active right now, so. They are specifically for Forest Lake residents.
Okay, any other questions for Patrick? Bridget?
You're there.
Ryan?
Council, I have a few things to go over with you guys. We have scheduled the ADA transition plan open house for August 19th. So, it'll be right before the city council workshop, 5:00 PM to 6:30 PM up in the community room. Some of the public information, handout stuff, flyer stuff will be prepared this week. So, I'll get some of that to Dan, too, to post online. Headwaters Place, the Lynn Pratt swap, Phase 2 utilities are planned to start this week. So, that'll be nice to continue that area there. The Seal Coat Crack Filling Project, but the crack filling portion of it will start August 6th. That does include this parking lot, so all those big cracks will get filled up, so that'll be nice. The local street project, kind of been underway for the last couple of weeks, which is out in the old township, north of Second and Third Lake. State aid project, make some more workhorse paving this week on 11th Street Southeast and 15th Avenue Southeast, and maybe they get to 11th Avenue by Lee the Two, but depending on schedule and weather. And then final striping will follow after that, once the payment's done. But really, we're getting closer to wrapping that project up. I have volunteered to be on Washington County's first-ever bike and ped technical advisory committee, so those will be done in my own time. Our first meeting with the tech is August 14th. So, we'll see how that develops, kind of what their goals or strategies are. Obviously, in my own mind, I would like to have better interconnection to the county to the north and potentially Anoka County to the west, to utilize what they already have in place. So, if you guys think of anything else, specifically with that, just send me a message. August 1st, there'll be a couple laws that will be in changing with public items, such as the retainage laws. So, we'll have to work through some of those things, but Sydney Public Projects, we don't have the old traditional 5% retainage. We'll have to work on different measures into that. So, we'll be exploring that stuff. We've already been working on it quite a bit. And also the speed limits, so it'll give more authority to the local road authority for us to go through the process, instead of always, you know, having to follow the min dots. You'll still want to set some standards, so you're not just changing the speed limits to be changing the speed limits. But it's given more responsibility to the local level, assuming min dots and staffing. There's just too many requests to work through that in a timely fashion. But still, we won't have, anything that we don't have road authority on, that still has to go through the county and state process. So, that's what I got, if there's any questions.
Any questions? Dave?
Just one point, a clarification from tonight, just kind of to defend my staff. I was pointing on the video and talked to Mr. Kating about the pothole patching. The area he was standing in was gateway green and is private. So, it's a private development. We do not patch potholes, we don't plow in there, we don't street sweep. So, it's not like my staff didn't patch the pothole, it's just not our area to do that. Not to laugh.
Thank you. Councilmember Jarrett?
Attended a planning commission meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we approved one of the items tonight. This week's a busy week with cable, watershed, and then the council planning commission. So, if you have anything you want me to bring to either of those, just shoot me an email. Other than that, I have nothing.
Councilmember Munson?
No update.
Very good.
Okay, thank you. I attended the airport commission meeting, which occurred on the 10th this year, because we had a, the 4th of July thing kind of got in the way. And so, basically, that was just a discussion on funding and upcoming projects. And we really need to build a couple more hangars out there. And right now, we're full, and we're trying to work with something out there. I think we have like 11 people on the list, and we could possibly build an area of nine hangars. So, that'll be interesting, see how this all works out. The school board meeting that took place last Thursday, I talked to one of the school board members on her way to the meeting, and it was gonna be like a two or three-minute meeting, so I skipped out. Sorry. It was just old business anyways. And then this evening, I did attend the EDA meeting. So, those are the things that happened here in the past week, so.
Dan stole most of my thunder related to the EDA meeting, and thank you for doing that. I am really excited about the Humphrey, us being selected as the Humphreys Institute's project in that downtown study. I think that's valuable information. Their timeline is to wrap up by the end of their semester, which is mid-December, which is nice for us as we roll into 2020. Also, I attended the career launch event, and I was only able to be at the very beginning of the session. So, thanks to Washington County, and also thanks to the school district for putting together a great program. As Dan mentioned, we had about 50 attendees. I would say it was an equal cross-section between public sector, business, and then also education. So, great partnership there. And then, the EDA had a great update today, and, you know, they have been working through a 2019 work plan. Most of those items on that work plan are either complete or well underway and kind of waiting for project completion or study completion. So, one of the things we will be looking at is kind of refinement of that 2019 work plan. Also, kind of great opportunity to take advantage of all the feedback we got during the community listening sessions. And so, kind of looking for next steps, but it's great to see kind of. But it's great to see kind of the progress that's been done so far, so.
That's all I have for updates, unless there is anything further to come before council. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and motion carries. We're adjourned.